A little after 6:30, I will call this workshop to order. And our first item on the agenda is strategic planning proposal review. Patrick, are you going to walk us through this?
Yes. As you recall, the council requested us to go out for RFP for a strategic planning process. We are interviewing, or not interviewing, having presentations from two firms today. The first one is Portage Partners with Meredith Fox and her associate Kaylee. And they will give you a presentation. And then I encourage the council to ask as many questions as they possibly can to get clarification in how you want to handle any of this strategic planning process.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Meredith Fox, and I'm the CEO and founder of Portage Partners Consulting, and had the opportunity to submit a proposal to the City of Forest Lake for strategic planning support, and have prepared a short presentation today that kind of summarizes who we are and what we're proposing. And I'm looking forward to sharing that information with you, and really mostly engaging in conversation with you about what we do and how we're thinking about approaching the work here in Forest Lake. So with that, I probably, is there, do I just, is there a magic keyboards underneath? Or can I just?
With a mouse, you should be able to.
Uh-huh. Okay. Here we go. Figured it out. First task achieved. So, Portage Partners, we are what we call a mission-driven consulting group founded in 2015. Certified Minnesota-based, women-owned, disadvantaged business enterprise. And our work is to help government, nonprofit, and education leaders achieve a brighter future for those that they serve. So we're in the business of helping those that are making the world a better place. And our core services are right in the wheelhouse of what you're looking for here in Forest Lake, which is community engagement, strategic visioning, action planning, and implementation support. So, the team for this engagement, I would serve as the engagement lead and the project manager of the engagement, meaning I would be having, you know, probably a weekly phone call with the core project team here at the City of Forest Lake to make sure everything's going how it should. And I would also be involved in terms of facilitating some of the bigger community meetings, planning group meetings, presentations to the city council, et cetera. My colleague Kaylee would be doing a lot of the community engagement work that we've proposed in our submittal. She also would be doing a lot of the research that we've proposed as an input into the planning process. And she would also be joining me in facilitating or co-facilitating a number of the various meetings that would happen through the engagement. A little bit about me, before I founded Portage Partners, I was the executive director of planning and accountability for the Minneapolis Public School District, which is a district of about 35,000 students, about 7,000 staff. Before that, I was at the University of Minnesota, worked as a part of the president's office doing planning work. And then prior to that was in the state government at the Department of Administration, also doing sort of strategic planning type of work. I'm a certified project management professional. I'm certified in the balanced scorecard, which is a strategic planning methodology. I'm also a certified leadership coach through the International Coach Federation, have completed trainings in design thinking through IDEO, Lean for the Public Sector training. I mean, really, I've sort of put together over the years kind of an MBA for myself as it applies to the public sector. And I also have a Masters of Public Policy from the Humphrey Institute at the U. My colleague Kaylee hails from New Mexico, and she and I met actually at Minneapolis Public Schools, where she led volunteer services for the district. And she's also held leadership positions in various nonprofits and was an AmeriCorps member previously. So in terms of what makes us different from other consulting firms, or another way of saying that is why I think we're a really good fit for this particular engagement, is that we like to consider ourselves practical problem solvers who deliver tangible results. So, you know, one of the things that we are proposing that wasn't necessarily explicitly asked for in the proposal or in the RFP, but we feel like is really an important part of any strategic planning process, is that we're suggesting doing a high-level program analysis, as well as an environmental scan, as a lead-in to the planning process. We have just found that that's just a critically important bit of research to do, so that when the planning team and all of the various stakeholders are involved in the planning process get started, everybody's starting from the same place. Everybody's got the same information from which to then start having the important conversations. And I also understand from talking with Patrick that, you know, he's relatively new, the council's relatively new, and it just feels like a good time for us to kind of pick our heads up and look at the environment and get a better understanding of how are you currently staffed? How are you organizing yourself? What kind of technology do you have? What other kinds of tools do you have? What do your demographics and political environment look like? Those are all the types of things that we want to know before we dig into an actual planning process. So that's one thing, is that we'll be grounding the planning in research about you. We also feel really strongly that stakeholders need to be a part of any planning process. And so we have, what we're proposing is that we engage with stakeholders both as an input into the planning process by holding a series of listening sessions, as well as what are called world cafes. Has anyone, I've seen some head nods. I love using world cafes. It's a great way to bring a cross-section of folks from all different walks of life from your community together to sit around small tables and have conversations about topics that really matter. And they're pretty quick. And yet you collect just a ton of great input. So suggesting that we do some of that listening, that stakeholder listening as an input into the planning process, and then also suggesting that we include some key stakeholders in an actual planning team who would develop drafts of the plan. So both pieces, I think, are important. You know, another thing that makes us really different is that we are very implementation-focused. So the plan itself is developed with implementation in mind, so we're always looking at how can these strategies become actionable for you as a city. And we're also suggesting that we work with you to install what I call an implementation oversight process, which really keeps your plan alive, you know, allows you to make adjustments to your plan over time. And I'll talk about that in a little more detail as we go, but I do think that that's a really important piece that makes us different. Just a couple other things, you know, while we definitely like to and think it's important to bring a lot of voices into the conversation and give important conversations the time they need, I also will tell you that we are very streamlined and focused in terms of how we run these processes. So this is not going to be circular, we're going to just talk about ideas forever and ever and ever. We are going to hit our marks, and we're going to move through the process in an expeditious way. But of course, you know, always giving that time and space for the conversations that need to happen. Along those same lines, I will tell you that we always land the plane with our clients. And in fact, we are brought in frequently by clients who have been engaging in a planning process with a consultant or not, who are just tired of the circular talking and thinking that tends to happen. And we've been brought in to really land the plane for them, and can do that for you too. Finally, we're going to customize this for your world, for your culture, for your timelines, for your needs. And also, our sessions are fun and engaging. We take the work really seriously, but we don't take ourselves too seriously. So, you know, people will walk away feeling heard and feeling engaged in the process, including all of you. So that's a little bit about what makes us different. This slide is just a quick snapshot of clients that we have worked with in the last five years. You know, when I think about the work that Portage Partners does, sort of our core work is doing that in community engagement and analysis, then the strategic planning, and then the implementation support. And sometimes clients, like in this case, we're going to do the soup-to-nuts version of that. And other times, they maybe already have a plan, and we're just putting in place the implementation piece, or maybe they just want to focus on the strategic visioning. So, you know, all of these clients are a little bit different in terms of where they fell on the soup-to-nuts, which, by the way, my husband, we were just driving back from the cabin just to come here. And we said the term soup-to-nuts. Do you actually know what it means? It means the beginning and end of a meal. I did not, I didn't know people had nuts for dessert. I didn't.
Sounds terrible.
No, that, yeah, I know. It should be like soup to cake.
And chocolate.
Or soup to pie. Anyhow. So, you know, we have worked pretty extensively in cities, the city of Minneapolis, we've done a few really large-scale projects there, worked with the city of Brooklyn Park about a year ago to put in place, they had a brand-new vision that they had created, and then worked with all of their department directors and their city manager to put in place the whole implementation process with them. You know, done a lot of work in the schools, obviously, a number of nonprofits, et cetera. And I'm happy to talk about any of those, if you are interested. So this slide gives you a sense of how we organize a strategic plan. Just a couple of points that are important here. The first one is, we really like to use the concept of strategic altitude. This is something I took from my balanced scorecard training. So the idea is that we're going to start at the 50,000-foot level, and we're very deliberately going to move down, making decisions, narrowing our focus as we go. I've found this to be a really effective way to make sure that you're making the most strategic decisions possible, as well as you're ensuring alignment of your plan. And another sort of core concept in our strategic plan model is making a distinction between the what and the how of the plan. So I like to consider the what, the governance piece. This is the piece that typically I would advise clients, that their city council, or their school board, or their board of directors, that that's what they should be approving and saying, this is what I expect the organization to be accomplishing over time. Whereas it's the job of the administration, of the city administrator, the city manager, the superintendent, et cetera, it's their job to then figure out how to actually achieve the what. So I like to really sort of draw that line very clearly between the what and the how. And then this is the sort of framework that will then facilitate the meetings against to sort of create each of those pieces of that structure. And obviously, especially as we get into these frameworks, I mean, I could talk about each of these for hours and hours, I'm just giving you the snapshot version. But this piece is, this is what I call our implementation framework. So you see the same strategic plan triangle just turned on its side. So the idea is that we come up with our long-term plan, which is our mission, our vision, our values, our overarching goals for the organization, for the city. And then on an annual basis, we select a set of projects, a portfolio of work that we want to engage in to drive our performance to, towards those goals that we've set. And we codify those annual projects into project plans using a basic project management methodology. And then we get ourselves into a weekly leadership review, where we're looking at both measures and data, one week, and then the next week, we're looking at progress on projects, and we're just alternating that. And then on a regular basis, reporting into the council, reporting publicly on how things are going, et cetera. So this is just a really great way to breathe life into your plan, to make adjustments accordingly, so that the plan actually stays relevant to your current circumstances. And all of this is supported with project management training, with coaching of leadership, with engaging stakeholders, with reporting to stakeholders, et cetera. And I will tell you, I've put this process in place in numerous, probably a dozen organizations in the last five years, and it really works. If you follow through, and you have the meetings, and you actually have the discipline to manage your work in this way, you will actually make progress on your agenda, and you will start seeing changes in terms of your overarching performance as an organization. So, bringing this now to the city of Forest Lake, what we've proposed is that we would start working with you as early as may, and that we would take the time to carefully work with the council, to work with your city administrator and other key staff, to establish what your planning process is going to look like. And in particular, who's going to be involved in it, and who's going to make decisions along the way. This is one of those things, it's one of those go slow to go fast. I've found that if you take the time to establish that on the front end, it's going to save you all kinds of headaches down the road. So we'll establish that planning process, then beginning in June, we would start doing that program analysis, that environmental scan work that is going to become the sort of basis for the strategic planning process. Beginning sort of mid-August through mid-September, I'm just paying attention to summer schedules is why you see some of this get bumped out a little bit, we would do the stakeholder listening. I'm suggesting in the proposal, we would do a few listening sessions, like I know you mentioned, Patrick, something with like maybe a staff session, maybe we would do something with folks that are on some of the councils, that are the different councils that are related to your city council, and then also host a couple world cafes, have that done by the middle of September. And then at that point, what I'm suggesting is that we actually use sort of a cross-functional planning team. So this could be between, it's going to depend on your stakeholder analysis, between six and 20 people. It can be big, that's okay. And in fact, sometimes that's even better, I can break people into small groups, and then we report in type of thing. And I'm suggesting we have five meetings of that group over September and October. Council members could certainly be a part of that level of the process, but we'd have to just be careful about sort of like, I'm taking off my council hat to participate as a resident type of thing, but that's totally manageable. And out of that, out of those five meetings, we would be able to develop or reaffirm your vision, your mission, your values, and an action plan for the next five years. And what I'm suggesting here is that you can see where the council would make decisions about various pieces. So I'd like the council to approve the planning process in June, I think that that's important, that you formally bless that. And then I'd like to bring the vision and the measurable objectives to the council in October. And then at that point, it gets turned over to the administration to figure out, okay, you know, looking at all of this, looking at the data, looking at the possible things that we could implement, let's select what our year-one set of projects is going to look like, let's assign sponsors and project managers to those, let's start meeting on a regular basis to support that work. And so I would like to do sometime in that timeframe, some kind of update to the council to say, this is what it's looking like. And then, so that would be sort of the, this is the supported portion of the work, but then I thought it would be nice for you guys to see, how do I, whoops. Once the projects are codified into project plans, and they've been approved by this new leadership group, I wanted the council to be able to see then what it would look like on a weekly, a monthly, and a quarterly basis. So this is after I leave, and we've trained up your staff on how to do the project management work, we've supported Patrick and his team on how to, whoops, on how to oversee the work. So then, on a weekly basis, the project managers are implementing, the oversight team is reviewing those, making adjustments to the portfolio and programs as needed. On a monthly basis, then, project managers are reporting on how things are going for their individual project. And then on a quarterly basis, the leadership team would report to the council to say, here's how all of the projects are going, here's what the data is looking like on these measures that we've set forth in the strategic plan, and then, you know, could have conversation with you about what adjustments need to be made sort of at that higher level. So I know that that's a lot to throw at you, but, you know, please know that this is a process that I have done, we have done with numerous organizations, it really does work. And, you know, in four to six months, we'll really get you quite far down the road in terms of not only defining what you want to achieve, but also starting to put that action into place, and start making some real progress on what you have said is most important. So, that is my presentation portion of this, and I would love your questions, and I can give you some more detail on any of these pieces.
I'm wondering at what point in the process, you know, we have a 2040 strategic plan for the city.
Yep.
Or comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, not strategic plan.
Right.
At what point in the process is that reviewed and evaluated and kind of unpacked in terms of the long-term?
Yep.
In terms of your process with us?
Yeah. That is a great question. And that would be one of the early pieces that I would look at as we're planning the planning process, is to even start unpacking what's in there, what does it tell us about the direction that this more sort of immediate-term plan needs to take? And so, and therefore, what does, how does the process need to be adjusted accordingly? And I would include some kind of summary of that in the initial presentation we would make to the cross-functional planning team, to say, you know, before we dig into what this more immediate-term plan needs to look like, we need to make sure we're really well-grounded in the sort of bigger picture, longer-term vision for the city. So I think it's, it'll, it would come up in multiple places, and I think is a critical contextual piece for this particular planning process.
Okay. Great, thank you.
As a follow-up to Councilmember Bystem's question, do you foresee using some of the artifacts that went into that plan? And I'll give you a little context around maybe some, one of my concerns. There's a lot in your process that I love and encourage, and we should be doing.
Yeah.
But I'm also holding that intention with, we just did a lot of that work, we just did a community survey, we just had roundtable conversations, and so.
Yep.
There's a practical side of me that thinks, unless we're going to pay for a lot of additional market research, and that as far as holding some of those sessions, those that are willing to give their time just did, and I want to be respectful of that.
Yeah.
Utilize that. I'll stop talking and let you answer an actual question.
Yeah, yeah. That's another great question. You know, one of the reasons that I put such a large chunk of time in, six to eight weeks in, sort of at the front end, is to understand exactly that. So, yes, we, anything you've got, I mean, I'm going to ask you, that's going to be like my first ask, is send me all the reports, send me all the notes from all the community meetings, you know, we'll do a pretty formal stakeholder mapping session to understand, you know, who's already been involved, and where are they in the mix, so that we can make decisions about what this process looks like that are very respectful of what people have already done. And, you know, so whether that's we do less of the listening sessions, or we do the listening session, but we make sure that the intro to that is, we know you were just here six months ago, here's what you said, and now let's take it to the next level. You know, I think that there's lots of ways that we can acknowledge that, and that's one of the big reasons why I build in that time at the beginning, so we can have that kind of dialogue and make sure that we get it right from the beginning.
So, my name's Kelly. I have, I've been through a gazillion, I work in the public sector, strategic planning sessions, so I've been with really, really good skilled facilitators and really, really bad facilitators.
Yes.
So some of my questions probably are really practical, and probably are going to sound like they're in the weeds, but it's really about.
No, it's okay.
Style.
Yeah.
How do you manage, you know, the conversations in a room? I would say the different levels of participation, those who are just the dominant speaker, interrupt whatever, and then you have the quieter ones who maybe, which is maybe where I fall, and where I have to process it a little bit. I mean, how do you balance that?
Yeah.
Because if that's not balanced well.
Yes.
It's a very one-sided plan.
Yes. Yes. Another really great question. You know, part of my answer is that I very carefully prepare for every meeting I facilitate. So I try to be very thoughtful about who's in the room, you know, how do we get through this conversation in a way that's going to bring all the voices and all the styles in? So, you know, I mentioned earlier, if we had a bigger planning team, you know, I love doing small group work within a session that we then report in, which for folks that maybe are quieter, that's a technique that can, you know, they'll feel a little more comfortable. You know, we of course always come up with group norms before we launch into a process. I always like to check in at the end of every session, what worked, what didn't work. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure, like, other techniques that I could share with you, except to say, this is actually what I'm really, really good at, and Kaylee is really, really good at, is.
That's super important.
Yeah, it is super important. It is super important. And it just, it happens to be something that, you know, there's, there's, yes, there's the tools, but there's also just like the intuition, reading a crowd, you know, I'm certified as a leadership coach, you know, I mean, I, this is, this is what I do. So, and I think also, you know, we're, when we talk about putting together a cross-functional planning team, we're going to want to be thoughtful about bringing in, being deliberate about different styles in the room. And so, you know, all of that is stuff that we'll talk about and we'll plan for before we even launch in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know it was a really basic question, but.
No, it's.
Super important.
It is important. It is very important.
Absolutely.
How do you move forward with the potential that 60% of us could be replaced every two years?
That was a similar question. Thank you for asking that.
Can I finish here?
Yeah.
So how do we, how do you ensure that the process moving forward is good for the city, and not just necessarily what we think is good for my council?
Yeah. That's a great question. Well, I will say that I do this work exclusively in the civic sector. So this is exactly the type of challenge that I deal with, with all of my clients. And I think that this speaks to the importance of that implementation oversight process, because really what that is, is it's an opportunity at a staff level, at a leadership level, at a council level, to look at the plan on a very regular basis with data, with progress reports, and make adjustments accordingly. So there, so there is that table to have that conversation on a regular basis. Because even if you guys were here for the next 15 or 20 years, circumstances around us change daily, weekly, hourly, and so we need to be in a position where we have a good process for dealing with those changes as they come, whether that's a whole new council, whether that's, you know, any number of things that could happen in a community. So that's why, again, I would say it's really important to invest in that implementation oversight process. Does that make sense?
It's still tough, I think, with.
Yeah.
You know, with a lot of the work you've done is with schools and foundations, and they don't have as much turnover, I wouldn't think, at the top as elected.
Well, school boards.
True.
Yeah. Yeah.
Other cities, similar size, that you've done any work with?
No. I mean, again, Brooklyn Park, city Minneapolis, both of those are a lot bigger, obviously. I mean, I think if you, I've worked with organizations that are similar sizes in terms of like number of employees, or number of people that they're serving, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to make sure I understand your timeline as proposed.
Yeah.
And so, it's, so it sounds like we've got a draft of a plan, and we are then in the implementation phase by about October. Is that, am I reading that right, that we've got a?
Yeah. End of October, early November.
Prioritize work plan items, and then we are in kind of working the plan?
Um, a little bit of a nuance on that. So what I'm suggesting you would vote on, let's say, beginning of November, would be vision, mission, values, goals with measures. We would actually build out, you know, this is how we would know if we're making progress. And then you would be able to see, when I say action plan at this stage of the game, it's really a menu of options for what we might, the work we might engage in, bless you, in order to get to the level of performance in the goals. It would be the job of the city administrator and his team to then select from that menu of options to say, okay, out of all this potential work we might do, and based on of options to say, okay, out of all this potential work we might do and based on, you know, the performance we're trying to get to, here's what we think the set of five to 10 big projects are that we should engage in first. And that would be something that we could update you on in the early winter of 2020, of what the actual work is going to be. So what you would see at the beginning of November is a list of potential strategies, potential initiatives, but that's not what you would vote on or we have the actual agenda ready for another couple of months. Does that make sense?
Is there an accelerated plan that might help us better tie with our budget process?
Ah.
So preliminary budget is September, preliminary levy is early September, must be certified, and then we are required to have a final budget by, well, end of December, we're typically, so I'm just trying to reconcile, there's so much of this that is going, for a lot of these conversations are going to be financially driven and, you know, there's lots of things we would like to do and that has to be reconciled with.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to kind of pull those together.
I, yeah, I mean, I think we could certainly go faster. I think it's going to be a matter of being able to pull together you guys and a planning team and potential stakeholder listening and I, you know, I think a lot of this was written just being sensitive to summer. You know, I think if, if you said to me, gosh, you know, it would make sense, the culture of this place is the people would come to a big meeting in June, yeah, then we could, we could certainly ramp it up. So, yeah, so we're available and, and the process would be such that it doesn't have to be over such a long duration, but it just depends on the reality of life and schedules.
Yeah, that was my concern as well. Thank you for bringing that up because as I'm, as I'm looking at the timeline, I'm, we're a little off where we need to be and the last thing we want to do is go through this process and have to delay, you know, implementation.
Like a year and a half.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
We won't have budget. I mean, it's, that's our opportunity to get.
For sure.
For those things and, and I don't want to shortcut, but I'm also.
Or rush.
Rush. And the, you know, the very beginning work I fully understand is important, but I'm also looking at a comprehensive plan that just has vision and goals lined up and we, you know, we've just.
Yeah.
Done some of that work now, not with this current council, right? So there is some update that.
Some reconfirming, some refining, yeah.
Is, you know, is this correct? But some, I, I'm still undecided in my own mind, are we, how much of a blank sheet are we starting with and how much is already populated with good information that we can use to feel good about springboarding into more tactical.
Yep.
Let's do it, let's budget for it.
Yep.
I'm still struggling.
Yeah, and I, and, and one of the first conversations I'll want to have is how much of a start-over plan is this supposed to be? Where are there pieces that we can just say, you know what, good enough? We can, let's just establish that as our starting point and we're gonna, we're gonna move on from there. So that's all part of that initial phase of figuring out, how do we really customize this for exactly what your circumstances are?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Paul answered my question. He asked the question, I was thinking about, you know, the changeover that happens and so, thanks Paul, you covered that well. Otherwise.
Do you, do you have any suggested composition for some of these teams that you're proposing? Kind of, are there best practices around that?
Yeah.
It sounds like we have potentially for some internal and some of our more key stakeholders to be part of planning teams.
Yes. Yeah, I like to have it kind of half and half, kind of half internal, like key staff, department directors, maybe a council member or two, and then half key stakeholders. So maybe like the head of your chamber of commerce, maybe, you know, if there's a big business in town, you know, so, and that's all part of that stakeholder mapping that I'd like to do in the early days to just figure out like who should be in the room, where is it going to make sense to, to have them in the room and what kind of participation should they have? So.
Okay.
Yeah.
How, how have you integrated or tethered yourself to financial analysis? Cause as a government body, sometimes there's a difference between what we would like to do and what we can afford to do and what the, what that tax levy will support or some different modeling of, how, how do you work that financial component in?
Yeah.
How have you seen that done well in other plans?
Well, one way that I would use financial analysis is part of that, like initial analysis as a lead into the plan so that as we launch in, everybody's clear about where we're starting from and just what the reality looks like. But I would say that in terms of like setting the goals that you'd like to achieve, you know, I like for those and I encourage teams to make those sort of stretch but reasonable, right? So it needs to be grounded in reality, it can't be sort of a unicorn goal. But, you know, at the same time, we want to push you a little bit, so we'll ground you in reality that way. And then the other place that it comes into play is when we're actually selecting what projects we want to pursue, that's where the finances will quickly come into play in terms of, you know, how quickly we can move on some of the work. And then I would say a third piece where it comes into play is, yes, we will set measures of success tied to those goals, but in terms of setting the targets for those measures, we're going to have to be reasonable about what's even possible. So it's like, you know, let's say we had a goal that, or a measure that had something to do with public participation in city commissions and processes, something like that. And that we're currently at 50% and we just know because of the reality of things, we can only bump it up 5% every year. Or maybe because of the reality of things, the sky's the limit. I mean, so it would just, I think the measures would get influenced by what the resource constraints are, whether that's money or that's just political capital and time with people, et cetera.
Is that why you have the word strategies in quotation marks? Potential strategies?
Potential strategies.
Or potential, I guess.
Yeah, it's like a menu of options.
Okay.
And then the reality comes in when we actually nail down, out of this menu of options, here's the stuff we're actually going to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was curious about that, not that it's a big deal or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it's the potential that, yeah, yeah.
Other questions? Questions of staff? Dan, Patrick, any questions?
That was very thorough proposal, thank you.
Yeah.
Very well written.
Also, great to see your other example projects, so thank you for including those as well.
Yes, my pleasure.
I really appreciated the high degree of detail too.
Yeah.
I love strategic planning and so it was really nice.
Oh, I do too. I do too.
It was very robust and I really liked that implementation management process integrated in there as well.
It really, yeah, it really works and I'm, I'm excited when I get to bring it to an organization because it really can make a, a real difference for your performance for those who serve. Well, thank you. It's been a real pleasure to get to think so much about Forest Lake, to be here, and we'd love to, we'd love to work with you on this project, so let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the Big River Consulting Group. Bruce Miles is the presenter tonight and the author of the response to the RFP and he's going to give his picture of what we're going to do here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
I should say.
I say good morning back.
Or it's autopilot.
Some place it's morning.
Well, I know what we're here to do, but how can we use your time most effectively?
This would be where somebody who is seated would tell me what they need out of this.
I'm sorry.
Now, he asked for your input on what would be the best use of your time tonight.
How do we use your time most effectively?
Starting with introductions, walk us through the proposal. I think you'll find us a fairly interactive group and so we'll quickly engage with some questions. It'd be good to hear fresh from you first.
Thank you.
And welcome.
My name is Bruce Miles. I live over in Sartell and after looking through your comprehensive plan, the city I live in, your city's got a number of similarities in terms of working out of downtown, we're not quite on a beautiful lake like this. And then a lot of undeveloped, a big portion of undeveloped rural agricultural land, potentially commercial right now, so agriculture. I was a teacher, I was a paraprofessional and then I was a teacher of emotionally behaved disordered kids. And then I went into administration and then for six years I taught at St. Cloud State and I taught courses for teachers going back to be principals and superintendents and business managers. One of your former students, or one of my former students is one of your principals in the district here.
Can I have you use, use the mic? We are simulcasting and so there are those that are watching from home. So, thank you.
That'll, that'll work better.
Thank you.
One day the dean walked in and said, I have four doctoral students that would like to take an independent study with you regarding strategic planning. And I said, Alice, that's wonderful, but I would rather poke a pencil in my eye than go near strategic planning after Ben, after having been a victim of some pretty poor planning. And, you know, it just, it took too long and it wasn't productive. And then Alice said, well, I'll give you release time for an entire class for a semester if you take these four students. And I said, you know, send them up this afternoon. So I developed a sequence that I call chainsaw planning. And I've worked part-time as a consultant since 88 and full-time since 99. And I've done somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200 strategic plans, the majority of which are for nonprofits, city governments, county governments, schools. About a third of my business is business. I do strategic planning for, for profit agencies and manufacturers and hospitals, et cetera. If I can take you to this yellow page, the yellow page lists all the steps for a strategic plan, whether it's for a city or a hospital or a bait shop. And, and they're all relatively simple and I've actually worked with cities and school districts and nonprofits where I've taught people on the inside how to use the tools and they've done a portion of the plan themselves or the entire plan themselves. I'm working with a school district right down, down in Illinois and I've worked with them three times over Skype and they've essentially manufactured their own strategic plan. The, the upside, I mean, we don't want to wear out department heads, but what happens though is once people learn to use the tools, they can use them repeatedly at the department level or the city level or when you decide to do another strategic plan, you can use the tools over again. What I put together for you are a couple of things in that packet and I'll come back to the others, but I put a copy of the strategic plan for St. Anthony Village in there, which is real robust. And I helped plan the event and facilitate the event, but they've already got a format they've used. They're a very mature city council and although they have a weak mayor system, he refers to himself as Mr. 51%. And so, he is a huge fan of strategic planning and so they really get after it. And, and they've used a format now for more than 10 years and so they kind of color in the lines every year to get theirs done. This is, this is awfully robust and clearly relates to their comprehensive plan. I also put a note in there regarding the, the Wilmer City Council and City Leaders Retreat. And, and I show you this because, this is a follow-up because they did their strategic plan. And so this was fine tuning about application and reliability so they could repeatedly go back and use the plan to guide their work. So the St. Anthony version is doing a plan and then the Wilmer piece is actually working a plan. My understanding is you have the proposal that I sent in, correct, electronically?
Mm-hmm.
I'll start in on that and answer questions wherever and whenever you want. If I could go right down to specific methodology, because I, the scope of work and proposal design and plan had to do with the documents that Patrick already sent along. I believe that less is more with planning. There's, there are actually some best practice planning articles published that suggest that most nonprofit and governmental agencies should spend between 12 and 18 months developing a strategic plan. And my response is, are you kidding me? I mean, that, that's cruel and unusual. Comprehensive plans take a long time, strategic plans don't. What I tried to do is give you some suggestions about how to get rolling here under specific methodology. So in the first 30 days, I would prep online surveys and send to Patrick for review and approval or any subcommittee of the council that wanted to be in on that committee. The idea is to put some online tools out there where we can start to ask some questions. I realize you have some archival data from surveys from your comprehensive plan, but a strategic plan is a little narrower in scope and much narrower in timeline. And so we'd want to ask some questions that triggered accurate responses. Also, based on your demographics, based on who lives here, I really believe that the council would be missing a lot of opportunity to create social and political capital if they didn't have online surveys. Given the number of people with white collar jobs and people that live here and what your demographics look like, these are people that are used to having input where they work and where they volunteer, so I'm a big fan of this. To follow that up, if I could take you to the green sheet. The green sheet is a fairly comprehensive list of subgroups that exist inside communities. These don't fit everywhere. I believe if you look somewhere, you'll actually see gangs, or it is 4E. We may not be able to have deep penetration into the big gang infrastructure within the city of Forest Lake, but what, what this is meant to do though is give elected boards and bodies a 30,000-foot view of who's out there. There's a worksheet on the back and I encourage councils and boards that are moving into planning to start to identify who they really want to go after for feedback and input. For example, if you invite somebody who's the head of the chamber to be a part of an input session, I would ask that chamber president, who are the 10 biggest businesses that you want as businesses, as members that you do not have now? I also believe that every large rural landowner, whether it's commercial land or ag land, ought to have an invite and a shot at the survey. And so the more comprehensive you can think about who's out there that you want to hear from, number one, the more robust the plan is going to be. Number two, you're going to have input from a number of people who might have inadvertently skated by this thing. And most importantly, let's just say that what your largest residential realtor is unable to make it. You get a chance to go to him or her after and say, say, we finished a strategic plan. We don't know if you went online to the survey because those were anonymous, but the plan is done now that we've had all of our sessions and I'd like to sit down with you over a cup of coffee and show you where we're going. That plan opens any door for you with any influential people in the area and if they've either given you short shrift or don't necessarily believe in what you're doing, it allows you to go back and start a different conversation with them. The green sheet, again, are a number of players that I want you to be thinking about, making sure are involved with and have access to, your online surveys and your planning sessions. One other quick note, in most communities, there are a number of senior citizens who are still using AOL dial-up or don't have any access at all. In the Cloquet School District, they passed a referendum recently and the superintendent said, if there are any more than five senior citizens anywhere meeting, I went to see said, "If there are any more than five senior citizens anywhere meeting, I went to see them." And so, the deep penetration into the senior community was a big deal. So, we don't want to have them have any problem not getting to the survey. So you could leave paper surveys and addressed envelopes at a number of places where your seniors congregate, including libraries and the city hall here. I don't want anybody to think that you set this up so they didn't have access. Can I answer any questions about sort of the initial data collection, the online or paper survey piece, or who it ought to make sure you get it to?
What kinds of questions do you ask in that online survey?
I typically take specs, if you will, from council, city administrator, department heads about what they want to see in it. Kathy, I hate to see it go more than eight questions. Because at that point, people tend to fade out. I also tend to ask a lot of open-ended questions. For example, "What are the three best things going on right now in the city? And what are the two biggest things that need more attention or improvement?" We can ask other specific questions about initiatives, about the future, about vision or priorities. But if you can keep it to a small number and really prompt people to type in what they think, you'll receive short answers and paragraphs back, which is much more meaningful than, you know, "We scored 3.6 out of 5 on this, what does that mean?" Typically, there's a balance of those Likert scales, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and the open-ends, but the open-ends are, in my mind, much richer.
Well, and that was one of my concerns with the online piece kind of being a fairly large component of the work that you do, is that I find those face-to-face, you know, interactions in a strategic planning process are so much richer, right? And so, an opportunity to have something a little more open-ended feels better.
Right, and I want to be able to say, "Hey, citizens, glad you all were able to show up to this session tonight for planning. There are two pieces of paper that you're getting, the first one's blue. It has all the online survey responses from employees. We have another one that's yellow and it has online survey responses from the community." Let's use those to start the discussion. We can certainly talk about everything else you want to, but take a look at those just to start to get the wheels turning. It's been my experience that if people can actually hold on to some survey results, it gets them thinking about a number of things as opposed to the one or two things they want to talk about. They still get back to it, but there's a more comprehensive data set in front of them, which I think causes a bigger discussion in that open meeting.
So Kathy kind of touched on a little bit what I was going to ask about stakeholder engagement. Do you use something besides just surveys? I'm one of the people, I hate surveys, hate them.
Sorry, I went that far in the survey topic.
Yeah, no. And the shorter they are, the better, but sometimes that, like Kathy was saying, that face-to-face interaction, are there strategies or tools that you use for that? Or how would you bring in stakeholders? We talked a lot about, when I ran for city council, about transparency. And so, I feel like sometimes surveys, you can share the results, but that community conversation is super important.
Survey's the tip of the iceberg if you want to go to Roman numeral 2, planning sessions. Over 30 days through 90 days, I believe that you hold as many community sessions as you quote-unquote "believe" you need. A friend of mine did this once in Little Falls, and he found that the best time to get ahold of the large rural landowners was 6:00 AM. And somebody put on coffee over at Farmer Joe's. And Farmer Joe's brought in his nine buddies who were just a little irritated about some things that were going on. And so, as a former dairy farmer, Kurt got a chance to sit with that group and have that actually be a focus group. Under Roman numeral 2, I'm a big fan frankly of having the city council, administration, and department heads do the first session. And you can see steps A through F there. That allows you guys to understand the project before anybody really asks you any questions. Kelly, if you actually, you call a couple of religious leaders in town and say, "I want to tell you what's going on. I was in the first session, it took about this much time, here's what we did." That's different than saying, "Could we invite you to the session?" If you can invite them to the session and tell them how it plays out, I think it gets a little more traction. So it doesn't have to be this way, but I believe that the first session really should be council, admin, and department heads. You could bring in key employees if you want to. I listed two potential employee and community sessions. You can certainly, we can certainly build in more or do more. I tried to list in parentheses there, a number of key players that I think really need a call. When you call, when you step into my yard, you know, because you're my neighbor, that's one thing. When you call me as a city council member and say, "You're a business owner in town, you're a school principal in town, I've known you for a lot of years and you know what you're doing, could you come in and be with us on Wednesday night from, you know, 6:00 to 8:30?" That's different than just putting a note in the paper and telling people it's available. Again, this sheet, for you to kind of put together a list of people you think are unbelievable, it's not that other people aren't important, but, you know, your four biggest realtors need to be all over this thing. You know, and your five or six biggest businesses need to be all over this. So, those are the people that get invited to the employee community sessions. You can see the items A through F are the same as would be done with the council, admin, and department heads. There's a final meeting where you all get a very large packet of all the results. You get all the survey results and all the results from all the sessions. And at that point, and we've told people all the way along that their work is advisory, it's not binding. Your work is binding. And you make the final decisions looking at all the information that people have provided to you. There may be things that are missing that you decide to put into the final plan. There may be a lot of trends that you want to respect but make more operational that you put into the final plan. But I really believe that the more information you have in front of you that's focused on some key questions you want to answer, makes your job a lot easier as a council. And dramatically easier for administration and department heads because you're already sort of moving down the funnel. I put a note for a follow-up session with the city administrator and department heads. So, just for example, if you all were to finish this on a Wednesday night some month, I would want, within the next week, administration department heads to be able to sit down with your draft results. And say, you know, "Here's something we're not clear about," or "I like where they're going, but maybe that's too ambitious," or "Maybe we should have a funding talk on this one before it really hits the front burner." To run it through one last filter with city administration department heads, I think, prevents any false starts, clarifies a lot of direction, and allows people to move on with fewer errors. I listed the total list of work, and then I put down the post-session work. Could we spend a few minutes now on questions about process? Or, to be honest with you, the most important thing is what do you want in the plan, or what don't you want in the plan? But we can talk process or plan elements, either one.
Can you share a little bit more about timeline? I know you had in one area, you had the first 30 days, but then after that, just kind of a ballpark.
Kelly, I tell my clients that if you can't finish a strategic plan in two to three months, you're just kidding yourself. And I don't want a council member to ever have to go to somebody, "Hey, we'd like to invite you to strategic planning," and have them go, "Oh, I thought you guys started that about six months ago, where are you on that?" I want the council to get traction and political capital by saying, you know, "We're starting to get on September 10th and this thing will be wrapped up by MEA break." I mean, I don't believe that more time necessarily equates to a bigger quality result. Maybe if you're the city of Miami, you need that much time, but I'd like to think you guys can pound it out quicker than that and have a nice reliable product.
Can you walk through a little bit more role, role of yourself and role of others on your team? You have a couple of individuals mentioned in the proposal. Primary facilitator, who do we see day-to-day?
It would be myself and Wendy. And we'd arbit that out in the beginning to make sure that it met your needs and your satisfactions. I'm the project manager and I could literally do the whole thing by myself. I am trying to go a little further and faster by having other people available. Wendy is one of the brightest people I've ever met. She's actually a developer and then works for another developer. And she develops senior care facilities that are positively cash flowing in almost no time. Wicked bright, great planner, very personable, clearly understands working with city councils because everything she does has to get through a city council somewhere or another. Rihanna Harley is a graduate student of mine. She is in the master's program at St. Cloud State University for organizational psychology, essentially organizational development. The kid could bend your keys with her brain, she's so smart. And we're teaching her how to do this. She is in more of an associate role. Amy Trombley is back office and technology and all the other things that make it work. I laid out some experiences and then a flat fee on there.
I'm having a little trouble getting from, we get a lot of input in planning and then all of a sudden we have a project. Walk me through that straight line to get from A to B there.
Right.
That was my question as well.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Well, let me see if I can run this, make more sense. So, with the initial survey, we ask questions that you want answers to so you believe that when you're done, you can develop a strategic plan. So if you want people to really, if you want to ask a couple of questions about perceived public housing or housing density, great. If you want to ask about misperceptions about city operations, we ask some of those questions upfront, as well as some broad-based, what's working and what's not working. Once the surveys are done, we start hosting those public meetings. And the first open public meeting is with you and your department heads. And you guys go through all the steps of a mini-planning session here. Then we use those same steps in community sessions and/or employee sessions with you inviting the people you want. So, the surveys sort of get people thinking about it and gives us something to talk about to start those open meetings. In those open meetings, people identify in detail all what they think is working and not working. They talk about the vision, where they want the city to be five years from now. And they also work through priorities. And priorities are the front burner items. So each of the sessions we run, people are going to say, "Out of all the possible things y'all could work on, we think these six deserve to come to the front burner before others." We also have them evaluate the session, we archive all that. Then all of that comes to you in a big, thick packet. We get into the final planning session with council, city administrator, department heads, if you wish. But at the very end, I give you the big book and it says, "Look, here are the survey results. Here are the results from the community sessions, from the employee sessions." And you all sift it out. And you take the best stuff out of it and put it into your plan. So, you know, there's no work that I do that's prescriptive. I don't, I do strategic planning with cardiac surgeons and they've never asked me how to cut people open, right? Because I don't know how to do it. But I help them figure out how to make the practice more effective and efficient. So my job is to keep bringing you information from all these facilitated groups so you've got as much worthwhile stuff in front of you as you could possibly have. And then you guys sort it out in that last session. There are some worksheets and structures that won't all just be a group hug, but, I mean, there's a way to get you through it in a very reasonable amount. No one of those sessions should take more than two and a half hours.
One thing I'm a little bit confused about is, you know, one of my visions for this process is for us to kind of unpack our 2040 comprehensive plan. And it feels, as I'm listening to you, like we're gathering a whole bunch of new information and new ideas. You know, where do we bring that document, that really, really important document for us into play during this process?
You're the second city council in 19 years that's asked that question. Because most people want a more operational plan, knowing where they're trying to go. If however, you want input on land use and economic development and natural resources, I mean, three big components of your comprehensive plan, we can use those sessions to tease out thoughts about that, so that you get very specific information so you can articulate a five-year plan on those key areas and more. But that's what we have to do in that very first session under Roman numeral 2. That's where you guys, as we say over in Stearns County, identify those key areas that we then carry out to the other meetings. Because I don't want you suddenly wandering off into left field in a strategic plan that isn't pointed at your comp plan.
Right.
I mean, if it's not pointed at your comp plan, you guys are running amok.
Yeah, there's always, there's also so much time involved with that already that they certainly have to marry into one another, there's no question about that.
Yeah, it has to honor it and feed it, as opposed to sit alongside it.
And then, can you just tease out a little bit more along this timeline? Where do we get from kind of this information gathering phase and conversation around kind of that vision and mission and direction we want to go to those strategic initiatives? The development of those strategic initiatives? Where in that timeline is that happening?
Great question. That would be in the final council and administration session.
Okay.
Because again, what you're going to have is all these other participants' best guesses about what ought to happen. You know, and those would be some people that'll come in that are one-issue types, and that's fine. But you're going to have a number of people with a lot of input about what you want to know about. And if it happens to be those five key elements out of your comp plan, great. If there's something else that you didn't put in the plan, but you want to do some research and development about, we can clearly ask those questions in the planning sessions. But again, I really believe that all those other sessions have to bring you what you want. Not necessarily people telling you you're doing a great job, but bring you information about the things that are most important in your vision for the city. That's why, in a perfect world, you and your department heads are the first group that sort of stake out the territory. And then we go back and ask questions in all the other meetings about a number of things people want to talk about, but get some specific feedback on those items. This may sound a little wide open. My best clients work hard to make this thing fit for them. You know, the people that I do that are running a tool and die shop are doing planning a little bit differently than the cardiac surgeons. Not better or worse, just differently to fit their needs. So a portion of this becomes working with city administrator and anybody who wants to sort of engineer it, if you will, so that we make this thing work for your needs as opposed to just using my stuff.
Can you clarify one thing for me? You just said about the first session being city council, department heads. Are you, just clarify with me, are you talking about like developing a framework? Because you said something about people coming to us with what we want and that seems backwards. It seems like we want the residents to come to us with what they want. So, am I misreading that, or?
In those community, no, you're not, Kelly. In those community sessions, if people really think it's too crowded on Fourth and Main, they're going to tell you about it, right? And if people really believe there ought to be closer adherence to the Met Council, they'll tell you about it, okay? I mean, they'll roll that stuff out for you. However, if you want more information from all those people that are going to give you their time about land use, then we ask specific questions about land use so you're able to make a great five-year goal of land use that lines up with your comp plan.
So framing the questions more?
Yep. So I would never run a public meeting on your behalf and say, "Well, it really doesn't matter what you think, here's what the council wants you to talk about." That's a recipe for disaster for everybody.
Right.
Again, there's no political capital, there's no progress. So we have to allow stuff to come up organically in those groups. But as long as you're here, here are a couple of leading questions about land use, what do you think? Here are a couple of leading questions about more accurately redeveloping downtown even for, and let people start to go with that. Because I really believe they should walk away from planning sessions more educated about what's going on they were when they walked in. "I didn't know you guys were spending time on that." Well, as a matter of fact, we are, and tell us what you think.
Talk to us about how your best clients or your most successful plans integrate financial analysis into the process. What does that look like, when, who, how? Patrick?
I believe that what you end up getting are frameworks that you want to put into this final strategic plan. Within 30 days, you should green-light the plan incumbent upon Patrick being able to put numbers together to it that makes sense for you. If, for example, you suddenly figure you need a, you know, 1,000-stall, four-story parking garage here, I suspect it's going to come back and the answer's probably going to be not in the very near future. But you all understand your fiscal parameters. I'll be honest with you, the majority of things that come out of strategic plans are not incredibly expensive. The majority of things that come out of strategic plans are operational and are almost predictable. and are almost predictable. I don't think you're going to suddenly have to figure out how to find more money to do the plan, because remember, you're the last group that gets it. So if there is an unbelievably ambitious land use goal or set of beliefs that people have, you're only going to build enough land use goal to spend money available in the near future. I mean, you would never walk over to Patrick and say, so on the natural resource thing, what we're thinking of doing is, you know, dredging and making, you know, a $400,000 or 400-acre lake right out here. I mean, you would just never do that. So since you guys are the final filter, even things that are ambitious, I believe, get turned into more bite-sized bits that fit within your five-year plan. I want you to have that long-term vision within the comp plan, but this is the real operational set of action steps that get you there. I've yet to work with council, any elected board, whether it's a corporate board or an elected board of the government, where people put down crazy stuff in the plan. After you hear from a number of people, it just sifts down. Some of the extraneous opinions start to float away, and you really end up with what's important to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How much time do you spend with us in total?
On the light end, it would be about six hours. Be three hours in the initial session and three hours in the closing session. I have other city council clients that require and need a lot more time because they've not had a very successful past developing either a comp plan or a strategic plan. And they don't like being in the same room with each other. I'm assuming that we're past at least two of those three things here.
We like each other.
It's going to make the job easier.
Most evenings.
So six hours total, that includes any work your team contributes to the process too?
Yes.
So kind of six hours.
But then, the follow-up is what's really important.
Okay.
You know, again, you could spend 18 months on a plan. It won't be any better than if you spend 90 days on it. The question is, how soon can we get down to the operational items that can be quantified and budgeted out? The follow-up with Patrick and department heads, I think is, to be honest with you, a shade more important than time with council. Because, you know, if you're doing your job right, you're up in the balcony and they're down on the dance floor. And you're giving them directions about how to move forward, you're not telling them how to dance or how to play basketball. And so a strategic plan ought to keep you at 30,000 feet, and you articulate what you want without exactly saying how it ought to be done on a day-to-day basis. Admin department heads come back with plans that you eventually have to approve based on the results of the plan. That's really where the work is.
Just to clarify, when you say six hours, you mean six hours physically with council, more time in, with staff, community conversations?
Yes.
All of?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You mean physically of council time?
With council, yeah.
That's what I was trying to get to. How much time total with this process?
To be honest with you, I've never had a council need more than six hours on this. Because the time spent with the community groups, the business groups, and department heads and administrators frankly, is, it feeds you guys. I should be able to bring it all to you at the very, you should go through your first session of three hours, and you should be able to take all the results from all the stuff and sort it out in three hours. I really believe that works. It isn't traditional strategic planning. Traditional strategic planning is very consultant-friendly and takes a ton of time, and it can be pretty painful. I'd rather have you finish and hand it to administration departments, they come back with some detail about how to do this. I mean, I was in a group once where we spent four hours with 25 people identifying a vision, right? We had 25 people, administrators, getting paid salaries and wages and benefits, you know. We had 100 employee hours into the thing. When it was done, we finished the vision statement. We never saw it again. That's strategic planning. And I just think that stuff's painful and just disrespectful.
So just so I'm clear, you're talking six hours for one, two, and three on here?
Under Roman numeral two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
The city council administration department head, that session should take three hours. The employee community sessions take three hours each, as many as we need to schedule. I put two in there, but we can obviously have more than that.
That's right.
And then we need three hours at the very end with council and admin. And then there's a follow-up with city administrator and department heads. And Kathy, my, again, my best clients cut and paste and say, we need more of this or less of this. I'm trying to bring you a framework. The more you color in, the better we're going to do. You don't have to be a strategic planner to do it, but the more council weighs in about what they want and don't want, the better it fits for the city and for everybody else.
So for us to want to have a, at least a rough draft of a plan going into preliminary level, levy approval in September?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a doable timeline in your?
Absolutely. I've worked with boards and councils where we've done the whole process in less than 30 days. I don't want anybody outside of this room to feel it was rushed for a reason. You know, if you go too fast and people think you're just too slippery, and that's not good for anybody. But without a doubt, you could have it done.
However, if, let's say we come up with a strategic plan that says we want to address our paving needs in the city, and we want to come up with a comprehensive paving plan that makes all our roads on a scale of one to 10 to five or better, the strategic plan may be fine and ready for the budget, but the money side, not. I mean, not that, but the analysis of how much that would cost us and how we would slot that is never going to make September deadline.
Right.
And to be honest with you, that's why, in a perfect, and not all councils want to do it this way. But in a perfect world, department heads and the city administrator are in the session with you. So they can gently go, Mayor, that's a great idea. Let's talk about how much we really could bring to a level of five on a scale of one to 10 within a year and see, you know, I mean, that's the counterbalance. Not, again, not that the council would go off into the great unknown, but that's the bonus of having administration department heads in the room is they can kind of provide backstory while you're working.
Can you, go ahead. Can you talk to me a little bit about, I asked the same question of the other group too, style and method in terms of facilitation? Because that makes or break what the result is. So in other words, I gave them an example of a dominating talker or someone who maybe is more quiet. How do you make sure you're getting all those voices?
For each session, let's just say we run a community session and 70 people show up. We take one deck of cards and throw away the jokers and pull another 18 cards out of another deck. And we deal them out. And say for step one, where we do an in-depth analysis of what's working and not working here, if you have an ace, sit here, we'll put the kings there, we'll put the queens there. So people repeatedly break out in small groups. I worked across the river in Wisconsin once where we had an open planning session, and a guy came all dressed in camo with a video camera. And I, my antenna were up a little bit, and I thought, and we didn't have any law enforcement in the room, which I thought was a mistake after he showed up. But once he found out that we were going to repeatedly break out in small groups, and then we were going to take our products and sort them out collectively as a group, and nobody was going to have open mic, the guy packed up his stuff and left. So it's my job to make sure that people get broken into small groups, because we'll all talk in groups of three or four or five. It's pretty hard to say, I'd like to address 50 people here or 70 people. So there's a worksheet for each portion of this thing. So when we do the micro-analysis of what's working and not working, people fill them out, and then we hear back from everybody. When moving to the vision exercise, people identify in small groups, new cards, new groups, new people, good to meet you, where we want to go. And we start to get a little more laser-focused on what the city should look like at the end of the five-year strategic plan. And then we break them into a final small group and say, okay, what items really need to come to the front burner around here? And we go through a prioritizing exercise. So if high pay raises for city administrator was brought up, it may not, you know, make the priority list. It may be important, but it may not make the priority list.
Yeah.
He may be voting for it more than once, but, but the idea here is, I want to bring you back prioritized information so that you really can see what came out of the group as opposed to all the outlier stuff. And the same on the survey results. I want you to see a summary of what was most important as opposed to every comment about what's happening on Fourth and Main, right? If there are 30 comments about what's happening in Fourth and Main, you'll hear about it. And if one person's got a problem, it'll be archived, but it won't be in the summary. But I want those sessions to have very little of my time. It takes me five minutes to explain the process, the survey results, and get people moving. If a city council person or the mayor can be there to bless the meeting and say, we're really glad y'all are making time for this. Thanks. We're not going to be here so you don't feel like we're looking over your shoulder. And you skate out, then it's pretty clear that we're going to meet in small groups and we're going to really be able to talk. Because people don't need to know what I know or what I think. The question is, how much information can we pull from you in the meeting? Long answer to a short question, Kelly.
No, that was great. Thank you.
Thanks. I hope that helps.
How long is each one of those meetings typically?
If we're working with law enforcement or fire, no more than 90 minutes. They're wonderful people, but they are busy and they have a lot of other things on their mind. If we're going to have an open community session, I'm encouraging you to go two and a half to three hours. Because we don't ever want to be able to go, that's interesting, but hold on to that because we're too busy to, we have to move the agenda. If people want to birdwalk a little bit constructively, we'll let them do it. So max three hours for those bigger sessions.
And where would you suggest role of planning commission, EDA members, park board members, people who have positions of authority within the city, not necessarily council? What do they fit in?
Are they citizens?
Absolutely.
Invite them to the sessions.
Okay.
Patrick might want to say, hey, you know, department heads, you know, you already went to one session with the council. You might not want to flood the next one. But if I'm on the park board or I'm on the planning commission, I'm a citizen, I ought to be in the room. I mean, it's an open meeting. We wouldn't want to have anybody not be there. We want to caution those people that they're not on trial or they're not doing an expository. If somebody really misunderstands something that's going on with the park system, I don't want somebody from the park board to grab the mic and say, let me give you about a five-minute diatribe about how we got there. That'll shut people down and not leave you with the atmosphere and the product you want. You're welcome.
Is this your end product? Is this your, you know, like a completed report? Is this?
No, I mentioned that that's, that's what St. Anthony has done more than 10 years using the exact retreat format, using the exact retreat format. There's a pyramid in there that are their key initiatives. What I do with them over two days is I help them get real operational about what's going to go into the pyramid. Everything in there is fresh, it's new every year. But the real thing that department heads have to move forward with, and they're in, they're in all day the first day for eight hours, the council's with the city administrator for four hours the second day. They come up with that pyramid, and that pyramid is what goes right to department heads and then come back with operational goals for us.
And they update it annually? That's their process?
They're a machine. They're absolute, and the mayor is a former Coast Guard guy. And he really gets planning and operations. And so he's on this thing like white on rice that they could not have a year without as long as he's there. The Wilmer model again is how to actually work the plan, stay on task, how to keep the job moving, how to get it done. Wilmer has had seven city administrators in three years. And so they have to make sure they spend time on the plan, because they can get sidetracked. Well, I'm sorry, they'll be hiring their seventh. So for them, it's a little different follow-up. They actually need to kind of be reminded to keep their eye on the ball. This is a different process than most strategic planning. If you're not comfortable with it, I understand. But is there anything else that I might be able to talk with you about right now that would make you more comfortable with, you know, starting with the surveys, moving to the open meetings, coming back together with department heads and sorting it all out?
What are the follow-up videos?
I have a number of follow-up videos that I send typically to the city administrator. And they're about three minutes, and they say, you're one week after planning. Here's what you should be up to. Meaning, what you should be up to. One month, two months, three months, six months. It's meant to be a nudge. And the city administrator can play them up on the video and say, okay, so this is where we really ought to be with our plan at this point. We're a little slow on this part, we're ahead on this part. But it brings people back to the focus of the process, not necessarily the content. You're obviously going to want to look at the content in each meeting, and you should. That's your first item under old businesses, your new strategic plan and those items. But I want you to get up to 30,000 feet and sort of watch the thing emerge, and that's what the videos are for.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it's, for me, this is a learning process. And I'm sure maybe someone else too, but I think, I think what's happening is a, is a good thing. We just need to decide how we're going to go about it. And I do plan on learning along the way. No question about it. So.
Maybe give Patrick a moment to come back in, and maybe we can collect our thoughts and give him, give him some feedback and some direction on next steps.
I know what they look like.
I'm starting.
Hate when I had one of them. Because I actually hated it.
Your cheeks are broke.
And so I said, oh, yeah. I wanted to do it again tonight. It was a cold thing. I was thinking flood drives. Went and looked at him again.
Because I don't want.
No one. Never occurred to me again. And I figured it wasn't 60 pages.
So we thought we would maybe take a few minutes, give you, give you some kind of, gather council thoughts. I think we're looking for some thoughts on pros and cons, what we liked, what we heard tonight, what we, what else we might like to consider. Anybody want to kick us off in some discussion?
I can, if you want.
Absolutely.
So I feel like we had two very different plans, getting at the same, you know, goal. The first one, I love the thoroughness of it and where we would be at every step. The timeline really worries me. I feel like that's too long of a time. The second one, you know, even when I was reading the proposal, it feels rushed to me and I don't know. It just feels wishy-washy and I don't know, like, there's also a very big price difference between the two. But the other, the first one, which is more, sounds like they spend more time. And it sounded to me, when I was reading through it and when they were talking, is they do a lot more of the work. Where I feel like the other one is really being put on Patrick and the... I agree with you on that timeline, and I'm wondering if there would be a way to potentially compress it down.
Compress it down a little bit if we have a lot of information before us.
I felt, I felt like the Big River plan, it sounds like he's done some really good work, it just doesn't, it doesn't, for me personally, feel like what I was hoping for, you know, as a result of this process overall. I agree, kind of rushed, it feels like a lot falls on either staff or council here, kind of to pull, even, you know, potentially the invites and pulling people together and getting stamped envelopes for seniors out to wherever and, you know, that kind of thing. And he did not answer my time question.
No.
I asked it over and over and over again, and I tried to elicit that from him, and that bothers me, so.
You're talking about the total hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that bothers me because I'm trying to care, I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to compare the time investment on our behalf to the proposed fee that they're going to charge. And I, that was very spelled out for me in the first proposal. This one, I just couldn't quite get there, so.
Like you knew what you were buying with the first one.
So that bothered me personally.
Other feedback, thoughts?
Well, sorry, as far as the staff is concerned, I mean, they're a really important part of this whole thing too because they know our city, simple as that. And I realize that, you know, either way, it's going to be a lot of work for them, but either company, I mean, they're basically strangers to our city, they're strangers to a comprehensive plan, and so, either way, the staff thing is really important. And so, I didn't feel the same way that Kelly felt about that. I do think that you want to get it done as soon as possible, and I think you do want to use kind of a compressed timeline on it. The hours, I'm not sure exactly what Kathy was driving at either, except that there has to be a lot of time involved at their level behind the scenes too, so that, you know, he never, he really didn't pin that down, so. But, so I gotta, me personally, I need to digest some of this, what we heard here tonight, and there's no question about that.
Yeah.
But there's a significant difference.
And I, I agree with you, Sam, about the staff is super important to this. I think what I was getting out of the second one was that the logistic-y pieces staff would be doing more of, is kind of what I was, where in the other one, it felt more like their knowledge was going to be used. I don't know, that's just what I, but like you, I've got to.
Maybe I misunderstood what your intent was there, but quite simple, but, yeah. Like I said, I need to digest what we heard here tonight and go over some of these things here too, but there is a substantial difference in the cost too, and.
I really do like the balanced scorecard and lean background, however, as well, in the first team. And the statement that really resonated with me with that group was, they always land the plane.
You should appreciate that.
I think so. No, because I want to do that part.
You know, I would, I do think we got two very different presentations, but I think they'll both end up where we want to be at the end. And I like the second presentation because we get there before the finances get roaring big time this fall, and I don't think anything happens till sometime next year with the first presentation. And that's why I would lean a little bit more towards the second presentation. It was a little more scattered, and I think there'd be a little more work, but to Sam's point, I think it's going to fall on the city staff to a large extent anyways. I do like that the other, Portage has lean, I'm not a fan of the balanced scorecard, so, sorry, Kelly, but that's just my own experience, so. Any process is a good process if it works for the city.
It works. I felt that, I felt like the second presentation, I appreciated that it was more of a tactical plan than it was mission and vision. Mission and vision is critically important, but I'm also trying to reconcile how much of a, how much of a blank slate are we starting with? How much is current council comfortable with our current, you know, we have a 20-40 plan that is just updated, that's got a vision statement, and if that is where we feel like we are starting, I feel like that leaps us ahead weeks of the first presentation. I also had a sense that the second presentation, they just seemed like they had more experience in working specifically with municipal governments, more familiarity with our comp plan, what's the difference between a comprehensive plan and what's a five-year strategic tactical plan that we're looking for. I did like the thoroughness of the first plan, I just, I'm very uncomfortable with the timeline, and we didn't get a crisp answer on how it might give this council something, a deliverable that is actionable in a timeline that we want. As I thought about this a little bit more as I was reviewing materials, it struck me that we have, between all of the input sessions that we did with the comprehensive plan, we did, we did a community survey, we did, you know, onsite sessions, we did a number, had a number of different types of, we had a park night, we had a land use night, we had a, you know, all sorts of different evenings and invited community members to that. All of that information is with Bolton and Mink, and I'd be interested if there was an opportunity for us to ask them of what, how might they take that information and digest it down to what a five-year plan might look like for us? I'd be interested in seeing what that voice was, given, you know, Ryan and his team is already, they're involved deeply and have, you know, kind of a historical context that neither of the other firms do, and then there's just a richness of information that they're already starting with. I'd be interested to see what a proposal from them might look like, if they would be interested in proposing. Throw that out there as a potential, might be an interesting third perspective that may not take a long time to pull together, but I'm leaping ahead, I'm speaking for Ryan on what that timeline might look like.
I would say some of my concerns about the surveys that I've reviewed, and I'd have to go back and look at some of the other data, but it was just the sample size on one or two of them that I reviewed was just so small, and it, you know, that really concerns the reliability and the validity of that data really concerns me. So, I would want to look at that, kind of in that context of that initial planning session to say, is this usable? Is this usable data? So.
Yeah, the first group, you know, I mean, they're used to working with populations that are a lot bigger than the city of Forest Lake, that aren't even cities, you know, so it seems to me that some of the stuff might have been just a little bit overboard, a little bit more complicated than it needed to be, and, but that's, you know, something to think about along the way, and they kind of brought to light when the second presenter came up, you know, and I think, they're very thorough, there's no question about that, but I think it was just a little bit more than, you know, they did do better with the city of Minneapolis or St. Louis or something like that than the city of Forest Lake. That's just how I saw it, so.
Are there other things we want to see from staff or put together that would help make a decision or form an opinion? Follow-ups with either of the firms, I threw out the idea of maybe soliciting a bid from Bolton and Mink or seeing what they might offer?
Yeah.
Let me just comment just a little bit, and as an administrator and going through the interview process last fall, I'm more interested in an operational plan than a strategic plan. I mean, they're kind of the same, but all I heard last fall was, our infrastructure's crumbling, our water's terrible, our sewer's bad, our downtown's bad, our roads are bad. That's where I think we need to focus. Those are, I think that you have done a comprehensive plan. I think you need to do a little more work on economic development, I think you have to do more work on the downtown plan. But it seemed to me, the priorities that I've heard to date are based on infrastructure, and how do we get our arms around that? And how do we then eventually pay for it and do the financial analysis? And that's why, while I agree that both firms were different, the first one seemed a little bit overly high-level for us, and the second one, while maybe a little low-level, probably could come up and maybe, or like the mayor said, if Bolton and Mink has a planner on staff that could lead us through something different, like the work plans that you've done previously, maybe that's the way to approach it. I'm really interested in, you know, what does the council wants to, for us to focus on, and, you know, Ryan and Dave and I all had a meeting today about just that, is what are we going to do with all this infrastructure needs, and then how are we going to get there? So, I know that's the big piece in my mind, the other things are okay, but the big piece is how to afford to, you know, have your roads five and above, and how to get your water so it doesn't collapse, or extend the water and sewers so that we can spur economic development and things like that. So that's what I'm, if you asked me, that's what I'd be looking for.
And I would agree with that, but I think it's also balancing that with what's going to get this, members of this community excited about supporting the direction we're heading.
Absolutely.
So, and that's kind of where I'm conflicted a little bit, because I see your point 100% with the gentleman from Big River. I mean, he's very focused operationally.
He was.
And so, I think that's my challenge at this point.
I'm operationally focused, it's my career, so I would probably lean towards Big River because I think one of the things, just being new here, is I don't think we've been able to explain well to the community what we do well and what we need to do. And I think that's part of the whole transparency thing that we talk about here. I don't think they really understand, as long as the police respond and the roads get plowed, they're fairly content. It's a little like going to church, if the music's good and the message is good, the collection basket gets filled up. So I think it's the same.
And the backpews are full.
The backpews are full. So I think it's a little bit, with the city, is we need the basics covered, which, to be honest, are fairly boring, right? We have toilets that flush and the roads are paved and the roads are plowed, and then there's the fun part, you know, what are we doing in the parks? What events do people want to come out with? And we do have to balance both of those. And I don't know if we've necessarily done a really great job on either end of that spectrum of, here's the state of the city type of thing.
Well, I think neither firm really talked about communications and how we communicate to the public and what they would do to help us with those communications and what kind of strategies that they may suggest. So I didn't hear that from either one of those, and I think that's an important part as well.
It's almost like we need a middle ground compromise of both, because I agree that the operational, which is essentially a work plan, which is different from a strategic plan, really. And so, what are, I mean, maybe as a council, that's what we have to figure out, is it a work plan we're looking for or is it a strategic plan? Because the comprehensive plan too is very comprehensive, and everyone talks about all the surveys and the roundtables and whatever, but honestly, never heard about any of those. And so, I worry about how many other people didn't hear about that, and now with a new council and new energy, and I'm not saying redo everything, but give them an opportunity to weigh in, so kind of a balance, you know, something, a both-and, a both-and, and being fiscally responsible.
Yeah, I think that's what I appreciated about the first group versus the second group, is that it was, you tell us what the direction, you, that's a big piece of their planning, initial planning, is you tell us where you want to land with this, right? You tell us the direction you want to go with this, and then we will kind of get you there, where I felt like the second one was, here's the pathway we're going to take, right?
Yeah.
And I do, I do agree with the operational side of that, I think that's critical. We have some huge needs and we've got to figure out how to fund them, but we've got to be able to bring the community along with us as we're making those decisions as well. And so, that public engagement and getting them excited about the direction we're headed is really paramount, I think. So, I guess I just need to noodle on this a little longer and.
I do think it's important to point out that both, both plans put a lot of weight in those community listening sessions, right? And both plans, and I think, you know, to Councilmember Munson's point, the magic in those is the strength of the facilitator. What I liked about the second plan is they were just very targeted, and here's how you make sure you're getting a representative cross-section of your community, and I liked the pragmatic approach of, it requires council members to pick up the phone and say, this is important, will you be there? And in reality, that's exactly what it's going to take. They seem, he seemed to get that and build that into the plan, and then both of them had that as a key element, and, you know, between what staff is going to tell us, what we all know as a collective group, having, you know, being in this position, along with those work sessions, I think both were probably 75% of the way there, either way, it's more now kind of style and.
Is there a way, Patrick, that they can, you can, I don't even know if this is, I probably should know this, but part of the process where you can bring this feedback back to both and see what revisions they can make?
Sure.
Not that I want to drag this on or make staff go through, you know, an 18-month strategic planning process at all, and I don't want to do that, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to, because maybe they just, like she was saying, she was thinking about summer, which, yeah, I would be thinking about summer and how do you get everyone together, or, you know, he, maybe, maybe he thought we would know more and he could provide more detail, so, just a thought. Not that I want to drag it out.
I think that, no, I think that's valuable. I also, so interested, is anyone else interested in seeing a Bolton and Mink proposal? Is that something that would be valuable? Ryan, is that something?
Ryan's awfully quiet over there.
I'll engage the planning group and then have them review what we have in the packet tonight, and then they'll probably have to make contact with administrator or maybe some of you guys.
Please.
To really understand what you guys are looking for, so.
The other, thank you, I think the other thing that's important is call some references.
Sure.
Hear from some of those communities. I think it'd be good to, especially the municipal contacts I'd be especially interested in.
Yeah, especially for the first group, you know, that didn't, you know, didn't have a little smaller city size, you know, level of experience, I mean, you know, could they get us there? I guess is the question that I would ask.
And then ultimately, I would like to hear preference from staff because either session is, either, either party's going to require a lot of work, and somebody that staff and department heads are most interested in working with in a process that is going to be a good use of your time, I'm interested in that feedback as well.
The only other, the other point I want to make is that my comments had nothing to do with the lower, you know, the differences in the proposal and the price. I think it's, that doesn't boil down to dollars and cents, it boils down to the right people being on the job, and so, even though there is a difference in the two proposals, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
And to Kathy's point, I mean, as far as the planning sessions are concerned, they're, I don't think they're cut in stone, you know, where we can't make some adjustments in that too, you know, these are certainly suggestions, I guess, that, you know, that's, at least they're trying to keep you in, keep you in line as we go, but I'm sure there'd be some things we could do to drive that one direction or another, so.
I think, I think we're all in agreement, we want a good end product.
Oh, no question about it.
Good useful end product, and something that we can be excited about.
I think it's, that doesn't boil down to dollars and cents. It boils down to the right people being on the job. And so even though there is a difference in the, the two proposals, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
And to Kathy's point, I mean, as far as the planning sessions are concerned, they're, I, I don't think they're cut in stone, you know, where we can't make some adjustments in that too, you know? These are certainly suggestions, I guess, that, or, you know, that's, at least they're trying to keep you in, keep you in line as we go. But I'm sure we, there'd be some things we could do to, to drive that one, one direction or another. So.
I think, I think we're all in agreement. We want a good end product.
Oh, no question about it.
Good useful end product. And something that we can be excited about. Not only from that infrastructure perspective and a roadmap to get us there, but that will get this city excited about living here and, you know, being a part of this community. So.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Great discussion, everybody. Let's move on to backflow prevention program. Dave, I think you're going to start us.
Exciting, exciting stuff to talk about. Good evening. I'm Aaron, council. I put together a memo. It's, it's new for three of you and Councilmember Husnick and Mayor Bean saw this probably two years ago. Hopefully you all had a chance to watch that, that short video that kind of explains it out. It does a lot better job than I can kind of explain that whole process out. I also have Chief Building Official Chad Baiman here tonight to answer the, the building side of it. My, my side is more of the water, the water safety is, you know, the, the water main break by the car wash this winter, we almost went negative pressure on that. And that's kind of where, in Public Works, our concern is on that. And his concern is following plumbing code. So kind of gave you a lot of information here, just kind of to have a discussion and see where you guys, you know, what questions you have or what, what you'd like to discuss.
So Dave, when you said you, you brought it here two years ago, did it just not go anywhere or what?
Yeah, there is just some, some pushback on, on some, some parts that there is fees associated with it. It's not designed to, to charge people to do stuff, so.
What's the failure rate on these fails? Do you know?
I don't know what the failure rate, I mean, the older ones, I, I'd say once you're getting, I mean, on a, on a commercial one, you're required to rebuild them every five years. So I mean, there must be some pretty good, you know, documentation or stuff that shows that they tend to fail about five to 10 years would be my guess. Residential, I don't know exactly what, what that failure rate is.
Because it just, I always just wondered about that because of the annual testing.
I do agree. I, I, I think the annual seems to be kind of heavy, but it's, it's kind of what's required, required in the code, you know, if they would have said once every two years or, but that's kind of what the code became and that's kind of what, what's required.
So help, help me understand the scope of this. So we would require every business and resident to install this at their cost?
So plumbing code already requires them to install it.
Right.
So not, the requirement would be that they would have to have, you know, a licensed backflow prevention tester come out to their house, test the device, and then they pass fail. And if it failed, then they'd have to fix it and then, and pass it. And then it would get logged into this, this app or a website that would show that they're compliant.
So old construction too?
From 2016, January of 2016 on is what are required.
So what about, what about resi, what about homes, what about buildings earlier than that?
So that, that's, that's an option. The city can, can do one way or the other. In talking with Safe Water Commission, the city of Stillwater said, we're going all out. We're going to require everybody within the entire city, no matter if the RPZ was put in in 1997 or in 2019, everyone's going to be required. The, the building code just requires from January 23rd of 16 and on.
Okay.
The sad part of all of it is the ones in, that were put in in 97 are probably the ones that are failed.
That, that's what I was going to say. It sounds to me like we'd be worried about the older ones.
Yeah.
Would this be only city water or all the people who are on wells also?
It'd be the ones in city water. It's to protect the public water supply.
And it doesn't matter if it's hooked to a boiler or something. I mean, that was always the concern. You know, they've always put them on where they were hooked to a boiler or something with automatic feeds and that sort of thing. But this would be every, every household, every building would have a backflow preventer on it?
Typically, not every house, typically your newer residential would be on irrigation is where you find the RPZ. The, the meter horns we have that go in with our water have a, a small check in them to prevent some black backflow, but, you know, you, you normally see them right on irrigation systems. That's other pretty easy spot.
But, but I mean, would potentially we're looking at around, you know, if you're looking at every household, for instance, whether we're looking at 5,000 a year, that's a big deal.
Do you know, Chad, offhand, how many, how many houses with irrigation since?
I, I don't, we don't track anything like that, so. I really can't say. Since 2016, there's been 148 new homes, new single-family homes. Some of those have irrigation, some of them don't. We don't keep track of that. Commercial, we keep track of because they get a separate water meter.
Are all 100, and some of those homes, were they all on city water or we have to subtract out the wells and kind of come up with an accurate count?
Some of them do have wells.
So we're just talking the households with irrigation systems? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. For single-family houses, yes.
For single-family houses.
Only have irrigation.
Okay.
And commercial buildings are already required to do that. I mean, a lot of them do submit an annual report to, to the city. Your bigger commercials, your targets, your Walmarts, your, your bigger corporates have it as part of their process that they just test their backflows and, and they submit them in the city, which they're required to do, just a lot of them either don't know that they're supposed to or just don't do it. I think your main focus would be your residential's and then, you know, reaching out to your commercial property saying, you know, and that would be your, your ones you'd be the most nervous about and the negative pressure in a commercial environment, you know?
Dave, I'm trying to understand these fees. This $3,000 annual license fee that's paid by the city, that goes to this, this company then, is that?
So that $3,000 is what the city pays Safe Water Commission to maintain the software, maintain all the documentation to handle all the, the reports that come in to, to track and store all that. And then the, the $16.95 gets charged to the homeowner for the test.
So that, that's the annual fee right now would be $16.95.
And that's on top of what the tester would charge, you know, the plumber that would go out there, the tester would charge to do that test.
Okay.
And that range is $50 to $100, somewhere in there, depending on who you get. And I think as these backflow prevention programs get going, there's going to be a lot more people that are going to get certified to test. That'll drive that price down.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a, either way, you're looking at over 100 bucks a year to have your system tested.
I think this, I, I mean, the, there are some cities that, that do it internally and then they charge a filing fee to do that. I mean, the, the city could do it internally, but then you're paying, everybody in the city's paying a part of testing people's irrigation systems or RPZs where this is basically user fee. If you have the irrigation, then you're going to pay that fee to get it tested, not your neighbor who doesn't have irrigation. You know, through tax levy would technically end up paying for a portion of an employee here to, to do that testing and do the record track and all that.
Do they also, does Safe Water Commission, as part of their contract, provide us with some communication tools? I thought I saw that, but it might be.
Yeah, they, they gave us a bunch of information to throw up on the website. We also have to give residents a portal to go back to that, that site. The nice thing about Safe Water Commission, they don't say you have to use this tester. So they'll, they'll say, on their website, if you saw, they'll say, search up, search that certified plumber within 25 miles and then they'll give you a list of all, you know, so they, and all these plumbers on there already be, you know, have their certification uploaded into the site. So, you know, they know that they're a legitimate contractor and, you know, they can pick and choose who they'd like to do to come and do the test.
So it sounds to me like this is a mandate and something has to be done at some point.
On the plumbing code side and, and on our side of Department Health, keep the ding in me every year for not having a backflow prevention program. And as we're looking to get a new well and a treatment plant and, and all that stuff, to keep getting dinged on that doesn't, doesn't show very well that, you know, I mean, we put on there that we tried in 2017 to start a program up that kind of bought us some time, but, and I believe Chad on his side too is, you know, you can only kind of tap down so long before.
Not doing anything right now.
The only, the only ones we're doing right now are the ones that are just voluntarily submitting.
So what is the, what is the requirement for commercial? So commercials required, do they also have to be tested?
Correct, yeah.
And those are happening today or those are not?
Uh, some are. I don't know the exact number. I know Becking Utility, but like she gets them and so she has somewhat of a bridge.
And does this program also include those commercials?
It would include them. They would just get a letter basically sent to them saying, Safe Water Commission is now handling the backflow prevention. So now you just submit all your documentation of them, which will get stored in that facility. So they'd be able to still use their same tester, just get sent to a different spot.
But for those that aren't doing anything today, they would have the same information, same processes as if it were a resident?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as of right now, every new home gets them whether or not there's a sprinkler system or?
No, it's just a irrigation system. And a house that has a sprinkler system, but usually that's only townhouses.
Yeah, but I mean, irrigation system, but we were just saying that you don't know exactly if they're having, we don't know how many of them have irrigation systems.
Yeah, but if it was a new house built now and it has an irrigation system, it would have some sort of backflow prevention on that irrigation system.
On the system itself and not necessarily just in case. In other words, you wouldn't?
No, if it didn't have an irrigation system, it wouldn't have one.
All right.
One that would have to be tested.
So can you confirm cost to residents? It looks like it's $16.95 plus the $50 to $100 fee, plumbing fee?
The technician.
Annually, annually.
And is annu, annually is the, annually is required by the?
The plumbing, the plumbing code.
The inspection, annual inspection is required?
Yeah.
But, okay.
I don't remember what page it's on, but it's, it's called 603.
Point 5, point 2, 3?
Yeah.
605, point 3, point 5, point 2, 3, point 4.
Are there any other companies that do this?
There's, there's quite a few. There's, there's actually a lot of irrigation companies now that are getting a certified tester on their staff. So when they do either spring startup or the fall blowout, they kind of tie that in with the price. We'll come and, we'll test your RPZ while we're here and probably help on the cost too. Since we're out here bone and all, we'll, we'll hook up the air and, and test, test your, your system as well. And then it's kind of a one-stop shop. So it's, like I said, it's getting more and more popular as, as more and more cities are adopting this, you know, backflow prevention.
And do, are they charged by Safe Water Commission to be, I mean, I know Safe Water Commission charges residents a fee. Are, are plumbers charged in order to be registered with them?
No, it's free to register. So they encourage anybody and everybody to, you know, to broaden that pool of people to, to be available for residents and, and businesses to, to choose.
So can we look at some other options for this work?
Excuse me?
I mean, you said there's others besides the Safe Water Commission that do this.
Yeah, there's, there's a BSI online and that's a national company. I think they're out of California. It depends where, where the city wants to go with this RPZ. If in the future you decide that you want to, say instead of 16, we want to drop it down to 2010 or all of a sudden make it citywide, well, these local, the local Safe Water Commission has staff that will walk from door to door and do audits, you know, and find all, all the RPZs. Whereas your national ones basically will ask Chad, give me all the list of all the new homes. And then they'll just either send them a letter, an email, and try to figure out if they have any irrigation. I think you, you just have a little more hands-on with, with a local company that
Okay.
are able to kind of, you know, and you can stay with the 2016 and future and if, but at some point, I just have a feeling that they're going to start going backwards on this too, that all of a sudden it'll become a, we need to have everything tested. I think they just needed to pick a date and time from right now on, we're going to do it. The ones that are probably failed aren't the ones going to be required.
So that's kind of why you're bringing this particular company forward to us, is this would be kind of your recommendation, Dave?
Yeah, they're, the, the prices are pretty identical. I mean, I can, I can whip you up a quote from them too. It's pretty much identical. It's just, these guys are local. And it's, it seems that they're picking up a lot of other clients within the metro. So I think they're going to be around for a while and I think it's just more of a hands-on. You actually have a person we met with, the owner and, you know, that group of people that in that video you saw, they came out and met with us. And so it's, and they're the same people that would be out doing the audit as well. So I mean, it's, it's more of a hands-on.
Do the technicians work specifically just for those guys though? I mean, the, the people that actually go out in the field and doing these tests? I mean, the, the, the company we're talking about, they just take care of the software and the, and the?
Yeah, they're completely indiscriminate of who does the testing.
Okay.
As long as they provide, they basically set up a profile on, on their website and upload their certificate saying that they're a certified tester. And then, you know, that, they don't, they don't care if plumbing does it or X, Y, Z.
Okay. What, my, my question was whether or not they had testers on staff. Okay.
They don't, they don't even get into that.
All right.
They don't want to have any, you know, they just want to handle the software basically.
I think their goal in that respect is to leave it up to the homeowner to get someone that they trust to come in and do the testing or if, or if they want to tie it in with their irrigation blowout in the fall, then they can certainly do that. So.
But it's important to have somebody that can legally do it. I mean, and, you know, be certified and all that.
It seems like a fairly small amount of homes that would have to comply if it's a 2016. I don't know how many irrigation systems we have in the city, but it would seem to take extremely long time to get some kind of mask where it would really protect our water. Or am I missing something?
There's one development that I know of that it's part of the homeowners association that you have to have an irrigation system. So there's one development in the city that every house in there has an irrigation system. So there's a potential for a lot.
And I, and I think too, and, and Safe Water Commission does a pretty good job of being in Stillwater. I've gotten their mailers now that they've signed on with them. And, and then the utility mailer, they basically, they kind of lay out exactly this presentation, but kind of jammed into a page and saying, explaining what they look like and why they need to be tested. And, you know, they provide that kind of information. And we're Stillwater's different. They're requiring everybody, but they make it more voluntary too and saying, if you have one, you know, please set up a profile and, and, you know, get on this list. So you might, you hopefully get other people before 2016 signing up saying, yeah, I got, I have an RPZ. I, I don't want to pull fertilizer back through the public water supply. And, you know, so you're hoping you get some compliance without, you know, some other people, you know, before 2016 saying, yeah, I carry well safe water and, you know, I want to get it tested. And so without forcing them, you'll, you'll probably get a, a good amount of other people joining on.
I think it's also setting the precedent going forward, right? You just, at some point it becomes part of the community standard. And yes, it's a little number of homes now, but 10 years from now, it's that many more. I, I feel the same I did when we talked about this previous council. Protection of the municipal water supply is important. We're going to have some challenges ahead, as we already know, on proving that we are worthy of a exception to tap into the aquifer and that we are, you know, good municipal stewards of that water. So I think we have to, whatever we can do to help build our case there is good. I struggle on the community education. You know, I just think about the, the emails and the notes we get on just like $40 per year, you know, surface water management charge that we charge or, you know, the different things that we are required to do. on just like forty-dollar per year, you know, surface water management charge that we charge, or, you know, the different things that we are required to do. Um, and this is kind of one of those things, and so, um, I also just personally, my own, you know, um, it's, it's one of those thi, it's, you know, things that should, as a homeowner, you should be doing, and how do we create enough education and information that actually prompts somebody to not just, oh yeah, I should do it, but I'm actually picking up the phone and arranging for someone to come over and get this tested, and I'm going to pay my hundred dollars. And it's just getting through those logistics is challenging, and so I think, um, you know, we can make it a, a, a policy. Um, but compliance, I think, is going to really be driven based off of communication and education and people volunteer, you know, choosing that it's important and that they're going to pay for it. Do we have adoption rates or, you know, like, from other cities of compliance, you know, what, what do they see for compliance and?
A lot of them are so early in their stages, you know, it's the, the plumbing code two thousand sixteen, that a lot of this is kind of where we're at, is fighting it off for long enough, I mean, just back to the Stillwater, they finally adopted it this spring too. I mean, so they kind of, a lot of the cities are kind of just struggling with the same thing we are, is, you know, you don't want to put another burden on a resident, making them spend that kind of money, but at some point, you know, you get either follow the rule or, you know, start paying the consequence. The worst thing would be if, you know, if you didn't have a program in place and you did have negative pressure and then you contaminated the water, it'd be kind of hard to fight that one back and quarter, if you had some people really get sick to say, oh, well, we didn't really think it was that big of a deal. I mean, don't want to doomsday it, but I mean, you know, it's.
We're going to have an opportunity to look at this on an annual basis to find out the failure rate, for instance? We're going to, are we going to be able to have a report on that?
Yep, so when they track it, they'll be able to tell you that if it, the device that tested failed, and if it passed, I mean, that'll all get in there. We, we can pull all that information off, so we get, kind of come from the backend of their, their software, we'll be able to log in and, and print off reports and all that, so.
Because if you have to sell the program, it'd be a lot easier to sell and say, look, we found fifty failures this past year or something, whatever number they happen to be. Because, uh, then you can, it's a lot easier to, uh, to sell it, sell the idea. And, you know, even though we might think it's important, it's just something that you still have to justify to the taxpayers that are paying that bill.
And I, I think, you know, to your point, Council Mayor Hrusnik and Mayor Bain's point, I think that communication and kind of getting ahead of that a little bit is a good idea. I mean, I would, I would rather just say, you know, can we get a letter to residents about, you know, this is, this is now a mandate, and then we have to be in compliance, and effective such and such a date, a few months out, or six months out, or whatever, you know, we're going to need to start enforcing this, and this is what it's going to mean to you. And that gives them an opportunity, you know, maybe we have a listening session or hearing or something, you know, on that issue. But I just, I think that getting, getting in front of that communication-wise, um, and giving people a chance to kind of prepare and adjust a little bit, I think we'll soften that a little bit, potentially, um, because again, it's another bill. And a pretty sizable one, actually, so.
Are there any cities that are taking on kind of building in, so if you think about, rather than one-off, every single resident, and I get now it's only a hundred, but jumped on the road and we've got a more sizable group, everyone doing that individually, there's some inefficiencies of, you know, individual trips and, you know, scheduling. Is anybody doing it internally of kind of building that compliance plan into their fee structure and then just providing that service? And saying, you know, just like we do water meters or, you know, check other things that, you know, this is the week and we're doing R P Z backflow testing and we just picked that up? Is there any sort of internal model that doesn't, that kind of provides a, the service to residents of, or maybe even something they could opt into, where we'll just take care of it, you don't have to think about it, and we build that fee into a building permit or? Anybody do, thinking about that?
Uh, I, I think maybe your, your St. Paul's in Minneapolis is, I, I'm looking at right now, they, they have a backflow test fee for forty dollars each and thirty-five dollars each, and they're not part of Safe Water, so I think they're, they're tying it in on top of a, you know, a permit they're tying in, and they might have staff that, that, that does it. I mean, that was the discussion that, you know, Chad and myself had too, is you try to do it internally, but you'd have to get at least one, one or two people certified to do this, and then you'd have to have, kind of, there's only a hundred right now, but, you know, they don't, you can't, you just don't walk up and look at it and walk. The next one involves, involves a test, so it depends on how in-depth you want to, if you want to make this a, a city, city process, or if you want to make it a third party that, hey, if you have irrigation, you know, unfortunately, this is one more thing that you're going to have to do annually. Or if you own a business and you have a boiler, you just kind of have to get a tester that just, we're trying to protect the public water. So I guess there's just kind of that balancing point, or do you want to, this would kind of keep it all third-party and, you know, unfortunately, here's the, the rules. We're, we're giving you an avenue to get these tested and be compliant, and just one way of the city kind of staying out of it, more or less. We're complying, but not, not really doing too much about it.
But it doesn't necessarily require a plumber, you were mentioning a guy who does sprinkling, sprinkler irrigation systems, blows you out, starts you up in the spring, blows you out in the fall, he could do the test probably fairly inexpensively.
Yeah, and I think that's the way it's trending. Um, Finley, Finley Fields, for example, we have a contractor coming, he, he blows out the irrigation in the, in the wintertime, and he always asks me where we're at with backflow, if we're required to know, because he does provide that service when he does the setups and blowouts. You know, that's just part of the package, you know? If any of you have irrigation that, you know, you'll get your rain master saying, we'll come and start up, shut down, and inspection, well, then they'd add a, we'll test your backflow in there and then certify it, you know, or take it, take it as passing. So I think that will drag that price down and it'll become more of a, just an add-on when you're, you know, when you have a contractor come and service.
And I think, you know, just again, that communication, reflecting on potential options for people, here's how you can get this done, you know? Um, because it sounds to me like the responsibility for compliance ultimately falls on the homeowner or the business, right? But we have some mechanism to monitor who's in compliance and who isn't.
We have to have a good explanation of the whole process, and I really, really do agree with that, because, um, you know, it sounds to me like the state of Minnesota is going to be really on this thing, and, um, I don't know what else we can do about that, it's going to, it sounds like it's going to have to be done, but we still have to explain it. And that information needs to be out there.
And, and we as a council need to decide how far back we go then, at what point, I mean, do you have any recommendations?
I mean, I, 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 well, I mean, your bare minimum was the, this two thousand sixteen, I, I think, you know, in talking with Safe Water Commission too, I, I think that's a good place to start, and then see how it goes, you know, see if you get people compliant. If your hundred, a hundred and fifty homes are all starting to comply and it's all going good, well, then maybe it's, maybe you look and say, let's rewind time back and, quite a more. I don't, I don't think you, I don't think we need to be that ambitious to go right away, because then I'll, I, I can't remember. I think that's extra fees to it, because I mean, then it requires a complete audit of your city, where they're walking on the ground, looking for all irrigation systems, and you could do that later on, say, okay, we want to even pick a section of town or pick whatever, say, let's, let's walk through here and find what we have here, and, you know, kind of work your way back, right? And your other option too is, you know, after the contract is done with, they give you a buyout option for, I think it's eight thousand dollars, you can buy all the information. So, you know, if, if I, after three years, we come back and say, you know what, I think, I think this, we can handle this on our own. You know, or we could just manage on an Excel spreadsheet and have them send stuff to us, and then, then you wouldn't charge the sixteen ninety-five, or you could cut it down. I think after this first three years, and you could circle back to it and say, okay, you know, you'd have to sign another service agreement anyway, so. How's it going, is it going good, is it bad? Do we want to rewind time, is everything going good? So I think this is just a good starting point that kind of somewhat keeps us out of it, but is getting us compliant and. Nobody likes to spend more money and more fees and all that, but it's just, at some point, you know, he wants to be compliant and I want to be compliant, I'm mine, and so it's, it's one of those things.
Something to think about might be, um, we just talked about compliance, 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 and, um, what if we were to think about rolling it out with some sort of a water safe, um, seal or something, or people could, you know, say, you know, so instead of saying, are you compliant? We could say, do you, you know, is your home water safe? And we might, you might include this, and you might include, you know, a couple of other things that we might want to encourage anyway, that would be, you know, join our water safe program, or, I don't know. Yeah, Dave, do you know if there are other cities that have? Sorry, something that lets, packages these things together in a positive way that people, of course, I want to do that, and here's what you can do, rather than just have it look at this enforcement mechanism. It's really just marketing of compliance, right?
Right, framing the message.
Right. That's, I was just going to ask if you knew if any other cities had, you know, marketing materials, communication already developed, things we could look at instead of?
They have, they have quite a few options, I mean, I can, I can bring that back as well. Um, I can, I can look through other, I mean, even the cities that aren't a part of Safe Water Commission, that have some kind of a black backflow, I mean, I can research that too, and, you know, that's a very good point, you know, more of a, that, that direction of, you know, we just want to keep our water safe instead of, this is kind of the, the backdoor of being compliant, but it's framing it, more of that direction.
Everybody wants Safe Water.
I believe the Safe Water Commission has a whole bunch of marketing materials as well that they send out, and they, and they, I thought they mentioned that too, that they send out an initial mailer and, and, uh, do a lot of marketing upfront as well to notify residents.
Other, any other information we want to see from staff before this comes back? Sounds like we've got some good.
So can we bring back a contract and an ordinance to do this? Is that the direction we have, or do we want to talk about this tomorrow?
Or?
Go ahead.
Well, we can't really vote on it tonight, one way or the other.
That's why, I mean, I don't know if there's more discussion in this kind of a format you want, or can we bring forward the action items that you need to put this in place with a little more background information?
I think we have time for the marketing, because our next utility mailer won't be until July. So I mean, I think we'd have, if we adopt an ordinance and, and set up this with Safe Water, I think the time for them to get the audit going, and then to come up with a, a really good one-page mailer to go out to all the, you know, the water users, you know, which we could craft, you know, that'd give us quite a few months here to get something really good in the mailer.
Yeah, I guess that would be my biggest concern, is sort of that communication timeline relative to the, you know, the approval of the ordinance.
Okay, so if we bring back the contract and the ordinance, and then later bring back the marketing material, that'll be okay?
Okay.
I think, yeah, full communication plan, and we should be ready as soon as that ordinance gets published, you know, that's, requires public hearing, does it not, right?
It requires a ten-day publication, we, I, it gets emailed out to everybody in our distribution list ten days in advance of the meeting. So the earliest you could consider that would be May thirteen, or the first meeting in May, because we would not be able to get the ordinance notified or notice in time for the next council meeting.
Okay. And then an effective date, so that's. It's an unusual sound. Um, an effective, think about effective date and an effective date that's out far enough that we get some communication out there, so.
Yeah, I'll look to it and how, I agree, I mean, you want to say, you better have it done next week, and, you know, so I'm sure other, other cities, you know, even through ordinance, should ever have a, you know, have to be annually, and maybe that's by the end of two thousand nineteen, or by, you have to at least be going by two thousand twenty, or, or something like that, I mean, just however we want to spell it out. But I, I can look and see how, you know, other cities have wordsmithed that, kind of not make a little softer.
Give what you need? Very good. And that being our last, last item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, or adjourn.